...of the city of Vandera on Thursday, January 3rd, 2019 at 5:30 PM. All council members present, with the exception of Mayor Pro Tim Gibson, seat administrator is present, and our city secretary is present. Is there anybody here who would like to lead us in prayer before we get started? Then would you please rise for pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Orby Engel? Oh, I think I would be speaking on the agenda on the CBBI. It was CBBI, yes. Now, remember folks, once we've heard from Mr. Mosley and Mr. Hicks, unless you have something totally different to add to this, we'll do like a raising of a hand, are you in favor of this or not in favor of this, because we're not gonna listen to how much of this. We've already had two different presentations by Mr. Mosley for this proposal. Resolution from both the county and the EDC, so let's move on to item four, the consistent agenda. Our approval of minutes from December 20th, 2018, regular meeting. Glenn makes the motion. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
On paragraph N, I guess that was what, uh, did I apply as paragraph N? It says, uh, say that the council member calling it.
I updated that.
Glenn?
Glenn emailed me and I updated it, so what was in the packet list, Glenn?
With that exception.
It was in the packet as well.
Um, the email I emailed out had not been fixed yet, Glenn emailed me personally and said I wasn't there and I went back and looked at the item and corrected it. But the packet was already present, so that part was fixed. Thank you.
Glenn makes the motion, breaks seconds, all in favor, all in favor of Glenn. Item five, discussion of possible action on the following items. Item A is a presentation by Vandera Marshal Office of Citizen Accommodation Awards.
This has to do with an incident that happened back in October. We had a young lady who was having some issues. She ran away from our junior high and we had no clue where she was at. She ran out the front door when somebody turned their back and we had lost her. And I had spent the better part of an hour looking for her. The school was out looking for her, everybody was out looking for this young lady. During this time, there was two gentlemen, uh, young men I should say, that, uh, they're frequently out and about. They're some of our home school kids from here in the area and they're usually out in the afternoons a lot, sometimes a little earlier, because they can have a little earlier than, you know, when mom's the teacher, we get to, you know, make our own hours sometimes. And they got out and I stopped them and talked to them and I gave them my cellphone number and I gave them the description of the young lady. And I told them, you know, if you see her, please let me know. Well, not even five minutes later, where I was in a completely opposite part of the city looking, they called me and said, hey, I, I, I see her walking right now, we're following behind her, she's on Main Street. And we all know how busy that is in the hours after school. So they pointed me directly where she was at, I was able to go, get her, hold her, call her grandmother and come get her. And because of them, this young lady, it could have been a, a, a much worse outcome on Main Street, especially in her, her state of mind at that point. And these young men helped me do my job and helped us do our job at the Vandera Marshal Office. And I, I scooted on it for a little bit and I went to, to Will and, uh, we decided that these gentlemen needed an award. So Kenton Hunter and Maverick Keith, y'all can come up here, we're gonna, we're gonna give them an award. And it says, uh, for assisting the Vandera Marshal Office with locating a missing juvenile on City 5, 2018. Without the assistance of the citizen, the situation could have had a much different outcome. The Vandera Marshal Office extends sincere gratitude and appreciation for your diligence and assistance. With the assistance and participation of citizens like yourself, our community has a bright future. So I'd like to present it to both these gentlemen.
What was their names again? I didn't hear them that.
Maverick Keith and Kenton Hunter.
Okay, thank you. Nice job, guys. Thank you, thank you so much.
Good job. Thank you, boys. Appreciate y'all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Okay, item B, the city is reporting the resolution of Vandera County County for three months hotel occupancy.
Dan's books, y'all, if you heard this, or somebody else more than books, I'm gonna try to not have to read everything that I've been reading. First off, at the EDC meeting, yeah, I, I heard it said for the once that we were trying to change the law. We are not trying to change the law, we are trying to change a section that changed the Vandera County, Vandera County only. Don't change the city of Vandera as far as hot tax, change, change anybody else, just Vandera County hot tax. We're not trying to change the law, we're just trying to give the county, uh, the option to do more things for the hot tax than what we have been restricted to. That was done 25, 26 years ago.
The commissioner should be addressing the council, not the office.
Correct, correct. Another thing I'd like to say before I read the resolution, which I know y'all heard, is that, uh, if Vandera County 25 years ago had decided not to hire an outside firm to do it, the county would be, would be doing it, had, had a hot, had a, a, uh, office set up to do it. We do not do that, we do that outside. Even if county was running it, we would still have to go through getting the law changed for the section change.
Running it, what?
Running, if we were running the, the money, the financials.
The disbursement of the, the hot tax funds.
Correct, correct. We would still have to go get it.
Okay, go ahead.
The bill that we have, that we're asking y'all, resolution we're asking y'all to send to us, reads as, whereas the state of.
I'm sorry, can I ask you a question, Jack? So, uh, just to go back to what you just said, the county has control of the hot tax funds then? And, but, but because there is a visitor center set, uh, set up, you have allocated those funds to the visitor centers to spend, but the county still has control over how they are spent? Is that correct?
We, we, the way it works is they have a pool of money, whatever it is, at the end of the year, and that is their budget. We get a quarterly report of how it was spent, okay? And they, we, they come up every year for to re-sign the contract and, and we approve or approve of it, and they've always been approved.
So the county does have control of how the funds are allocated?
We do not have any say as to how they are spent.
Because of the way the law is written now?
Uh, it'll be turned over within the meeting.
But ultimately it's your control, you've opted to hire them to manage the money.
Yes. Ultimately, ultimately, it is the county's control.
We don't, we don't.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make that. Let's move on, okay?
The state of Texas County Hotel Auction Tax is, are regulated by Tax Code Number 3, subtitle D, chapter 352, County Hotel Auction Tax. Whereas Vandera County is authorized to impose and collect hotel occupancy tax under this chapter, whereas Texas Code Section 352.1032 cussingly restricts Vandera County to use hotel occupancy tax revenues only for the purpose of general promotional and tourist advertising of the county and its facilities and for conducting its destination programs to attract conventions and visitors, and for acquiring a site for the construction, constructing, improving, enlarging, equipping, repairing, operating, and maintaining of visitors information centers. Whereas additional use of hotel occupancy tax has, are provided at the Tax Code 352 and certain, and certain of those would benefit Vandera County as allowed. Whereas Vandera County has identified funding needs for purposes provided in Section 352. Point 101 of the chapter, as well as historical preservation and restoration and removal of trash and litter and state-owned river, river beds located within the boundary of the county. Whereas legislation is proposed that will expand authorization, authorization, meaning authorization to hotel occupancy tax revenue in Vandera to improve the purpose provided by Section 352.101, as well as for historical preservation, restoration, removal of trash, litter, state-owned river, river beds located in Vandera County. Whereas this legis, legislation serves to protect and promote the interest of the citizens of Vandera County. Now therefore, be resolved Vandera County's district report, hereby supporting the proposed legislation as it's attached here to expedite and sign on the 11th day of October as you note in the notes, and the bill is on the back of, of y'all's copy. There are several things, the handouts that I gave y'all, talking about changing, us trying to change the way Vandera can, can spend the money, they had a copy of this. The following counties are, these are just examples of different counties, of how they spend their money. The following counties are authorized to use hot, just keep it a hot, if you hear, for purposes provided by Section 352.101, that's the rest, 352.101. Counties with population greater than 3,000 million, 3.3 million, which at that point was Harrison County when it was passed. Counties bordering Mexico, there are 14 bordered counties, in that, they have a special set of rules, just those 14 counties. I don't know what they are, as I would say, they, they got a bill passed, but just for them. Certain counties bor, bordering Whitney Lake, not all the counties bordering Whitney Lake, but certain counties bordering Whitney Lake. Certain counties bordering Lake Ray Roberts of Indenton County, okay? Again, I know where, I've been by the lake, going to Indenton, uh, I don't know the counties that's involved, but only certain of those can do a law, a, or a, one of the sections here. Loving County, which has no municipality, is allowed to take their hot use in the Tax Code chapter of this, for cities, not for counties, a different, it's a different tax code, which is 351 and not 352 for counties. They are allowed to use their hot only for convention centers and facilities or visitors' information centers, furnishing facilities, personnel, and materials for the registration of conventions, delegates, and registrants, and in the encouragement, promotion, improvements, and applications of the art. Counties bordering Lake Jane B. Thomas, which is in Spurrie County, may only use hot for coliseums. Certain counties bordering the Natchez River and Trinity River, counties that, counties that fit, five counties fit that prescription, may only be used for their route. Certain counties containing universities may only use hot for a coliseum and affecting visitors. Certain counties through which, through which the Ramblas River flows, may only use hot for convention centers and affecting visitors. Certain counties bordering Mexico, may only use hot for special event facilities and seats, special event facilities that seat at least 8,000 people. Certain counties located wholly within the Edred Pocifer, which is Uvalde County, may use hot only for promotion of tourism, lodging, and removal of grass and state-owned rivers and river beds. And that's just a few of them. There is, I don't know, have any more than this right here.
Address this, please, Jack.
And this, here, all these, here are different ones, different, different bills that have been passed. One, two, they've accepted, like, we're trying to do, uh, 101. Somebody's done 101, somebody's done 102, somebody's done 102, 103, uh, which is what we're trying to do.
To use the funds to try, I'm sorry, buzz. Use the funds to try to promote, you're still promoting, you're still promoting tourism and trying to get people into the county.
Promote, promote, correct. Promote, correct. The, as far as what we're trying to do, we're just trying to be able to have the funds be used in different, doing differently than the ways, the way we're doing it now. Basically, we haven't had a say-so, how it's being spent. And that's one reason that this got started. I gave y'all a few other copies, the city of.
Go ahead, we'll finish, Jack.
Okay, the city of Vandera, the hot tax group, different cities around us, the counties around us, and, uh, for Van, the city of Vandera is 35,000. That is not completely accurate, that came off y'all's budget, because the figure wasn't completed yet when we did this report, but that's, y'all are budgeting $35,000 on the hot tax. If you look at the other cities around you, they're all bigger, well, they're constraints really, that's areas, if you look at that, but then you've got Vandera County also on there, and that's what we've got. That, except the 35,000 from the city, that's just, look, y'all have budgeted, uh, on the hot tax. And then I gave y'all just the monthly sales tax. And you can see, it's, it's typically higher than, but the hot tax, so, and doing what we're trying to do, we're trying to promote tourism, get more people coming to town. The hotels and motels are nearly the last thing that involves tourism. Get to come to Vandera, or go to any place, because of attractions and what's going on, they end up staying in hotel or motel. Very few places that I know of, I've only gone to one, which is Kate's Hotel at Mariposa, but I wouldn't specifically go to that hotel. Now, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about good mansions and all that, I'm just talking about hotel, motel. There's lots of B and Bs in town, I know they're not all being collected, that's another project for some other day. But basically, all the county is asking is for us to be able, be able to spend the money differently than the way it's being done now. And it's not a much, trying to say anything that the, the CBB is spending it wrong, I'm just saying that, like, the way the law is written, we are being restricted only to promoting, or, excuse me.
I agree.
Not just promoting, promotional and tourism advertising, okay? But getting these things changed, if we, uh, we can promote Mansfield Park, we can make, we can make improvements in that, on Mansfield Park if we want to, but, but looking at the numbers to do that, it would, would not make sense for the county to ever do it. The, uh, this year's Mansfield Park, I mean, the hot tax of Vandera County is 30, 387,000 of the total hot tax. I budgeted 180,000 to run Mansfield Park, that's been no improvement, that's just turning of electricity, paying, paying insurance, uh, one, one and a half employees, uh, gasoline, toilet paper, whatever it takes to run Mansfield Park. So, it's, there's about 100, 140,000 dollars worth of spend, half off the, the hot tax. So I wouldn't do it, if I, we, I just use this one seventh, because they're, they're familiar with the, the two sevenths of kind of, with some, that figure came from FedEx, that's what, less we can, or what FedEx worked, they took the money from the CBB, two sevenths. So I just use that at this point?
Let him finish what he needs to say.
Okay, the one seventh, if we just use one seventh of this 387,000, that'd be 55,000 dollars. And it would be, we, the county, everybody on the board, or on the board, we'd better spend 55,000 dollars if we do that, to promote Mansfield Park, and not to put it into Mansfield Park. The improvements that we're trying to make at Mansfield Park are looking at about three and a half million dollars. So, hot tax, it's not gonna help Mansfield Park. If we get it done, the hot tax will help promote Mansfield Park.
Well, and then I think the EDC and the city council also approved a, a $16,000 study for Mansfield Park, and, and I'm, what I'm hearing from that is.
These numbers, these numbers came from the report that the EDC paid for.
Yeah, and that study is, is a positive study that Mansfield Park does create, you have an event in there that does have, uh, you know, you, you get people in motels, hotels at the ranches, so.
We, we gave the EDC a report back in October, which is after one year of working on it. A very conservative figure from the firm that did it, and most of y'all know it, and it's actually, uh, called 3.2 million dollars in years, 16 seventy, that would have generated in town, or accounts here, accounts, yeah, yeah. 3.2 million, so, it's worth trying to do something with it. That's a whole different subject from the, the hot tax. But working on Mansfield Park is what got me working on trying to figure out, the hot tax.
Real quick, so what is the bottom line financial impact on this, there are two different numbers here, one, you're looking at 55,000, you take the one seventh to fill all.
I love hot tax, I love hot tax.
Hot tax, but then you're also asking to have the ability to work with 387,000 dollars, half of which it sounds like is running Mansfield Park.
No, no.
So, you mentioned 387,000.
That, that is a total of hot tax from my, from this year, from 18.
And then you mentioned it costs you a hundred and some grand to run that, left over 140,000 after that.
And then I said, mathematically, that does not make sense when you gotta promote other things. Because 55,000, 55,000, if I just took one seventh, would not do anything in running Mansfield Park or making improvements in Mansfield Park.
So why waste a, hang on, so. However, your resolution doesn't say anything about how much you intend to take.
Well, it, it doesn't, you, it doesn't, you don't do that on the resolution, you want to Austin. I'm sorry.
Well, but, but that's fine, but is there any sort of plan, any sort of outline as to how, you know, that, did you give it to commissioners' court, say, if we take one seventh, we can do this and this and this? And, I mean, how did you come up with this magic one seventh?
I just use as an example for them to think understood, they understood two sevenths. Right now, Vandera County, right now, the Vandera County.
Yes, sir.
Can we ask more? You know, I go to a lot of commissioners' meetings and I'll hear this audience talking all the time when I go to commissioners' court. I don't know why people think they come into the city council and have the right to just keep talking while we're having a presentation.
Thank you, Glenn. Go comment, ask, be respectful, keep your comments to yourself. My question was, what assurance, since tourism is our base only industry, what assurance do we have that Commissioners' Court won't take two-thirds of the hot tax for this new proposal that you have? And without the promotion of Vandera County in advertising and, you know, going to the San Antonio Rodeo or the whatever, bringing visitors from here, how can we have any assurances that you're not wanting to take a bigger chunk out of the CBB promotional budget, like a huge chunk?
All I can answer for is this court right now. We need, we need to get more promotion. That's what, this court, I can't speak for the future. That is one reason that this got started by another, Joe D. Rutherford, when he came on for your, he was concerned about it, because it restricts the Commissioners' Court in the future. That's why we had to go to Austin and change it.
I just wanna make a few comments. Uh, there, this summer, there was a meeting held here at City Hall with all of the business people in the city, and they were asked, what needs to happen, what can the city do for them? And what they said was that the, the cowboy capital of the world, the promotion of that has surpassed the product. We have people coming here looking for cowboys. This resolution to me is showing that they are trying to create more product for the tourists to come into town and, and go to, the, the, you know, if they, right, right now, this is not allocating any funds to anything, they, to me, they're looking for the future, whether it be a year from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, we may have hotels lined up from Vandera down 16 South. And, you know, then that's gonna create more hot tax, and they should be able to use that to create a, a product for people to come to Vandera and visit. Do you want to hear from Mr. Hicks before we have conversation amongst ourselves, Glenn?
Uh, that's what I was gonna say, can we hear all the presentation before we start giving the changes and changes?
Yeah, I'd like us to hold that down. Yes. Anything else you wanna add?
The Commissioners' Court has not discussed how to spend it, uh, but that's not been really an issue, because it, it may take another two years to get involved, but, but it's a field change. And we have not discussed how to spend the money. We have to have the authority, the ability with these changes to have, be able to, be able to do it differently. We may be, be able to give it back to the CBB evidence now, but the ability to spend it somewhere else, it's gonna let them run it. We can hire a different firm from the outside, or the county can form a, a department in by themselves. They often not do, because as y'all know, labor is expensive. But we have not discussed, all we're trying to do is get a law, a, a bill passed that changes the way Vandera County is done. We have never discussed the CBB as it is now, as, as a court, okay? I know Mr. Rutherford came in four years ago, all hot and bothered about it, but as a court, it's never come up as an issue. Hot tax has come up, and that's because I got involved in Mansfield Park, trying to figure out how to make it work.
I think I have one more question for you before we move on and go past Castle, give your final question. Here's a resolution by the city of Vandera attached to what you submitted. That wasn't written by our staff or our.
No, that was just a resolution that, that is for Vandera County, is asking y'all to approve what we're doing.
Well, no, you have attached to this a resolution by the city to be signed by me and attested by Jill. I just wonder where it came from. So are you saying if, if, since the city did not come up with this, obviously, you're, you're not aware of it, but did you want our city attorney to look at it before?
This has already been sent to our city attorney, as soon as we received it last week, so.
And has he had, made any notes on it?
This will not be anything that we'll be signing tonight.
Right.
If you choose to, to support the resolution, that will go on record, and then when it comes in, we'll get the, give it back to council, council will approve what's written, and then I'll sign it.
Okay. Just to clarify that.
There's nothing on the body of that that is any different than what's on the, the county that I read. All it says is the city of Vand, the city of Vandera.
I'm not worried about that, Jack, I'm wondering where it came from. You don't know?
Yes, and we, we vote it. Yes, and we vote it.
You vote, okay, cool, that's all I wanted to know.
And we, the EDC has the same thing, except it's the EDC.
Okay.
And that doesn't say that y'all wrote it, it says that y'all, the county's asking y'all to say that you're supporting the resolutions.
That's all.
That y'all support the resolutions.
Thank you.
Not saying that this is your resolution, that y'all support our resolution.
Thank you.
And so EDC had one bit like that, but a different name on top.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions for council before we move on?
So as a business owner and a person who runs a nonprofit, anytime we make any moves or decisions, there's always a system checks and balances in place. And it sounds like as the cart's being put before the horse, and you're asking for the ability to spend this money, but there's no plan on how to do that or any structure as to how, what accountabilities will be placed in. I think that's probably part of what makes people nervous about giving anyone the authority to have a blank check, if that makes any sense. I would think if it, and obviously, this is already up in, in Austin at this point, so you don't necessarily need our, our support. But I would think if I were on a board looking to approve something like this, that there would be some sort of plan that says this is what our intention is, this is what we're going to say to make sure that this money is not just for the willing and willing to do whatever. And I had not heard that yet. On the flip side of that, I've not heard from anyone from the CBB at all. No one's come to me and talked to me about what their concerns are on, on this, so I'm a little lopsided on what's, what's asked and what the figures are, what's going on. I've talked to both yourself and Judge Evans, and I hear what you're saying as far as what your intentions are, but I don't know whether that's going to temper what you're feeling, seeing here without some sort of direction. Does that make any sense? I understand that. I'm all for not having restrictions on how you spend money so long as it's for the benefit of the county, of course.
Again, it has to be, we have the hot tax, it has to be promoting tourism. Regardless of...
Even with the change that goes up?
Yes. That's, yes, it's not promoting tourism because it is a hot tax. It's just British changing, um, ten thirty-two, it's a Banderas County exclusive. Okay? I, I, you know, this is how they could spend it. Okay, that's promoting tourism. According to the state of Texas, that's promoting tourism.
And then ultimately, you control the purse strings on this, where if you decide not to hire the CBB, you do that at any point in time.
Yeah, that's correct.
Um, you've got...
At any point in time, but for any day, no.
But there, at this point, there's no intention, like you said, you can't speak for future courts, and we're going to get that. How much money is going to them, and how much are they actually spending? Is there any overlap, or is there any way...
I had a figure seem to me, Tricia, because it took you all about a hundred-and-eighty thousand, something like sixty thousand, something like that.
I don't, I didn't bring the absolute budget with me, but we carried over an additional twenty-eight thousand to open this year, and the three-sixty-eight, we got two-sevenths of it, two-sevenths of it. One other thing to address what, what Bryce is saying, and I think it was in today's paper. It's a, a resolution kind of talking about what the county does plan to do with some of that hot tax, and that would be to make preservation of the courthouse, which is a, a, a huge historical building and, and a tribute to tourism in Banderas. And there, they also recognize the need for an update that they need to do to the Banderas courthouse master plan. And that would be include, include, you know, addressing the American Disability Act, what they need to make that courthouse accessible for handicap. And then also, the master plan is, this Banderas County courthouse master plan does include the old jail and the old courthouse. So they, they are trying to, uh, address what they might be using that money for, and that would be promotion.
The old, the old jail and courthouse has already been, it's already been done, and it's two-sevenths, that's what we're spending on that. This additional thing that came up to me, the new courthouse, which is a hundred years old, um, now, right now, this court is not planning on giving you any hot tax. That's, that's, that, the old jail and courthouse is two-sevenths of the hot tax.
Right, do you need a question for council? Yes, good.
I'd just like to respond. I don't see the necessity to have, uh, set goals or intentions, you know, what you're going to do with the hot tax, if you should change it. That's why we have elections, we elect people to make these decisions. And, you know, if you don't like the decision they make, you elect someone to get rid of it. But they do control the purse strings on everything that the county does, just like we do everything. It's our decision. It makes sense to allow them to have everything that they need to do their job the way they see fit.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Morris? Okay, Mr. Hicks, you want to come up and speak to us, please? Mr. Briggs next, from the CBB.
Good evening, thank you, council members and mayor, it's opportunity to speak. I just had some great points that you found out in the mail. Basically, where we're going as the CBB and as concerned citizens and business owners here. A history, a little history real quick, I'm trying not to take too much time because visiting what would like to reveal, speak, learn to others, I'm not too sure. The history, back in nineteen ninety-three, the hot tax fund was brought here to Banderas. I got this part of that land ranch, and they went to Austin and literally got this fund so they could promote tourism, market tourism for Banderas County. The second part of that was to actually run and preserve it, or build a, convince a visitor's center, which I will get to in just a second. But in two thousand and sixteen, uh, the Commissioners' Court enacted a basically a, a bill for two-sevenths, the two-sevenths of the money of the hot funds would go toward the restoration and the renovation of the jail and the courthouse, old jail and old courthouse, and then create a visitor's center. Two-hundred thousand dollars the past two years, it's been put aside roughly for that purpose, of which we are still waiting where we're going to go as far as architects, as to where they're going to hire for that. But that's kind of been all a limbo for two years. The big concern right now, I think that everybody has, is, um, the addendums to the hot tax three fifty-two that Commissioner Mosley was talking about. Different counties, whether it be Harris County to build the Reliant Center, it's actually a municipal deal, three fifty-one. They, they set up these funds because they did have individual things that they wanted to do. Uvalde County, for example, their tourism is Concan, it is the Free-O River. So they took twenty-five percent, and this is important. He talked about all the different things that these counties did, and they can only use the money for this or only use the money for that. Everybody, first and foremost, is using money for promoting and advertising for tourists, first and foremost. Uvalde County is a great example, the Free-O River is their market, that is their tourism. They only take twenty-five percent of that money, okay, the Commissioners, uh, for the, for the actual restoration and cleanup of the river, you know, restoration, but the cleanup and everything else and the tidiness of the river because of tourism. Seventy-five percent is still for marketing and tourism, you know, marketing tourism, advertising, promoting tourism in Uvalde County, which is the Concan River for the most part. As all y'all know, and it's been spoken, tourism is, you know, the, the motor that runs the engine here in Banderas County. And I think it's very important, as the Commissioners move forward with this resolution, that they're talking about additional monies. And we're very concerned because we understand the two-sevenths has been already taken. You mentioned Fredericksburg, there's other counties that take two-sevenths of the money, some a seventy, you know, twenty-five percent for various issues, whether it's a, a convention center, uh, as in Kerrville, I believe, uh, some of the other places. Uh, makes a lot of sense. But again, we don't know the ratio, we don't know, and I think you brought that up, Ms. Maris, we, we don't know, and we're concerned as citizens, what's going to happen to this money? Are we going to have money left to market, promote Banderas County? Are we going to be able to go out and improve as we have the last twenty-five years, making this a very marketable place? As y'all know, we are in competition with Fredericksburg, Kerrville, New Braunfels Green, there's so many other places people can go. And we're really afraid if the drop in the dollar, we're going to really lose, we're going to be hurting there in Banderas County. You know, I know Old West Imports went out of business recently, and she said it was because of lack of business. And we, you know, the last two years have cut two-sevenths of the budget. So we're doing our best at the CBB, and I, and I believe, you know, Mr. Mosley, some of the things he said, we have no problem promoting Mansfield Park when we have something to promote. That's what the CBB does, that's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be, you know, enlisting just one little specific thing, but all of Banderas County tourism. And all the things that we are, you know, presently doing in Banderas County, they do put, you know, heads and bits here. So I, I just, I find it very, very important, and I, I wanted to bring up that all the addendums, the things that he mentioned, you know, for whether it be Harris County, you know, the fourteen counties down by the Rio Grande, all of them did these addendums in addition. We've already done a two-sevenths addendum here, where we're already putting two-sevenths of the funds basically into this restoration of the old courthouse and the old jail. So again, the concern here, I think the primary concern is where we're going forward, and I think Mr. Cal, you have a great point, we, we are very, very concerned as, as, you know, Banderas County citizens, owners, ranch owners, B and B people, and you'll see a lot of immigrants and I, and that's why I didn't want to take too much time, Ms. Maris, so I'd like to let you two of those to be able to speak.
Questions from council? All right, Mr. Hicks. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ma'am, ma'am. Excuse me, we're only going to, would you sit down, please?
Oh, I haven't recognized you personally.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
I did not know the, the proper procedure. Now, my question to the visitors is, does anybody have anything to say that is different from what either Mr. Mosley or Mr. Hicks has said? Anything, a point that has not been touched? And your name, ma'am?
Diana Lovett.
Before, Ms. Engel, do you have anything that is different from what has been said?
I think I do.
Okay, we're going to limit you to three minutes?
That's fine. I'm Barb Engel, owner of Cutaway Salon and Spa, forty-one years, and president of the Vidalia Lake Betterment Association, Lake Hill Civic Center. I also co-chair the Vidalia Lake Cajun Festival, which has been in existence for thirty-eight years. It's the primary financial support for the Civic Center, it's a nonprofit. I'm here to take a stand against the Banderas County Commissioners' Court's decision to divert more funds from the Banderas Convention Visitors Bureau. By state law, these funds are to be used to attract out-of-town visitors and to operate a visitor's center. As they mentioned, they've been taking already two-sevenths of the taxes, and that is, I think, for a good purpose, to create a visitor's, uh, center and build, buildings already owned by the county. But to pass, ask the state to pass a bill to take more hot funds is, in my opinion, wrong, and will hurt the businesses in Banderas County, and ultimately, Banderas County itself. Under the leadership of Patricia Moore, the CBB has done an excellent job in attracting visitors to Banderas County and promoting tourism. This increase is not accidental. It is a result of consistent planned advertising campaigns. These have produced results, and they should not be taken for granted. Any experienced and knowledgeable businessperson knows that advertising is a legitimate and necessary business expense, just like utilities, labor, or supplies. Spent wisely, it produces results, and has produced results in Banderas County. The Vidalia Lake Cajun Festival receives state and national attention to our county and brings several thousand persons per year to Banderas County. The festival is critical to the survival of the nonprofit Lake Hill Civic Center. Already, our advertising funds received from the CBB have been cut significantly. This latest diversion of hot funds will cut it even more, leaving our organization to scramble to try to make up the difference as the cost of effective advertising increases yearly. All businesses, motels, and B and Bs will be negatively impacted as the tourism industry in Banderas County slows. Competition for tourists and their dollars is fierce. The CBB needs the hot funds to keep the flow of tourists healthy. They are doing an excellent job of promoting Banderas County. It is not easy to be a small businessperson in Banderas County. We provide jobs, and our businesses produce sales and property taxes, which provide revenue to Banderas County. We need and deserve help and respect from Banderas County. I have the greatest of respect for our elected officials. Overall, I feel they do an excellent job for us. However, I respectfully submit that the hot funds are one cup each jar they need to keep their hands out of.
Did you have anything to add to that?
I'll be brief also. I just want to clarify that, in fact, the resolution that was passed by the Commissioners' Court at their October eighteen committee is, in fact, a, asking for a change in the specific law that does govern how hot funds are allowed to be spent in Banderas County. Each county has their own specific law, so I want to be clear about that. It wouldn't have to have presented this proposition to Andrew Moore as a representative for Banderas County, had it not required a change in the law. So this is a pretty good deal. I am, except for eleven years that I paid my penance of living in Dallas, Texas, I've lived here all my life, and I love Banderas, I love Banderas County, I love the old courthouse that is hopefully going to be restored soon, and the old jail. My father's office was in the top story of that building for many, many years when he was the county agent. What bothers me about this, uh, proposition is, in fact, that it does not specify ratios or percentages of what percentage or ratio of the hot tax fund would be used for these other purposes. No question, when people get to this county, we want them to have wonderful things to do and a great time doing them. I, I do also disagree with the idea that people come here only to, um, participate or observe or, uh, attend events. My husband and I have been owning and managing our guest ranch, Hill Country Equestrian Lodge, for, um, over eighteen years now. And we certainly do love the events, but many people in between those events come here to enjoy the outdoors, that we have the beautiful countryside, the peace and quiet, the clean air, the gorgeous plants and wildlife, in our case also, our horseback riding and our horses.
And our river.
They do enjoy our river, but I'll be honest, many times, uh, they, they love, I, I encourage them to enjoy the river, but they come to our ranch, and they don't necessarily get the river, and especially because if we have a dry year, then it's not doable. Don't want to get off the subject too much. But I wanted to be clear about, this is absolutely a change in the law that would govern how hot tax funds can be used in Banderas County. And in fact, they're taking parts of laws that apply to other counties or municipalities and wanting to apply those to Banderas County. So essentially, I have a problem with how broad and nonspecific this proposition is written, that it doesn't talk about ratios of money to be used. I'm also concerned because, uh, as was formerly mentioned, two-sevenths of the budget of hot tax funds has been set aside by the county since October first, two thousand and sixteen, for the restoration and rehabilitation, you might say, repurposing of those historical buildings off of Maple Street, behind Banderas Ice House, to become a visitor's center, but very little has happened with it. It was to be a collaborative effort in terms of planning the site, because there are parking issues and, and traffic flow issues with that site, but the consensus among the Commissioners was, to my understanding, at the meetings I attended and the discussion when they hired architects, is that it could be worked out if they had private and public entities meet together to discuss and collaborate on how to organize those parks, the, the, the traffic flow, the parking, just the overall concept of that area. So in that loop of time since then, all that's been done is a very cursory plan for the two buildings, no meetings were ever had with the committee that was formed to collaborate. Forty, about forty thousand dollars have been spent, and all there is to show for it is a plan that, to my knowledge, no one wants.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, again, we've had two people who've said exactly the same thing. Do we have anyone with anything new to say? And by new, I mean not in support of this. How many of you are here in support of the CBB's position that the city should oppose this resolution? How many of you think the city should oppose this resolution? Thank you. How many of you think the city should support this resolution? Thank you, I think that says everything we need to say. Council, discussion?
Well, I did a motion first, we can discuss. Okay, well, I'll make a motion to support the resolution of the Banderas County Commissioners' Court regarding hotel occupancy tax legislation.
Do you have a second? You have a second?
I, I guess the, oh, go ahead, Tom, I'm going to let you speak.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor, it seems like we lose sight of the fact that everybody has the same objectives, the same goals, and reasonable people... the same goals, and reasonable people can disagree on how to achieve those goals, but everybody wants to improve tourism in the city and the county. And when I hear the disagreement, it sounds like you have to be disagreeing all that much. I think the commissioners and the CBB need to sit down and think about what's the best way going forward and come up with a consensus among themselves rather than having to decide one way or the other.
Lynn, I think you want to be speaking. Tom, how about the... Glenn?
Well, again, I agree with Tom. You know, this needs to be a discussion between the CBB and the commissioners, because, I mean, commissioners, whether we're county residents, likely or not, they make the decisions. You know, so, and again, I think they should have every tool that's available to them to be able to use. And again, if we don't like the decision that they come up with, then come later and fix it up.
I think the overall resolution is the positive thing for, for the city of Van Derrick. It does not affect our hot tax, but I, I just think that the whole resolution is a positive for the whole community of Van Derrick.
Thank you. Bryce, do you have anything to say?
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Tom said in that I've spoken to one side of this, the commissioners and the judge, and I was here for the EDC meeting when everyone else was here for that. There's a lot of passion here, which I allow that. But to your point, it almost sounds like, from what they're telling me they want to do, they don't want to disband the CBB. That's what they say, okay? And I have no reason to not believe that. I'm not talking with the CBB on this, so I apologize, I'm not much of a voice for that. But Judge Evans says he's invited people to talk to him, and no one's taken up on that offer to come up and talk with him. Whether or not that's true, I don't know. That's just what I was told. And it does sound like we are working for the same goal. I still don't know, the numbers don't match in my head as far as how much of an impact this would be, should they take all that money, but I don't know, it just seems like we're being intermediary when they should be face-to-face, put together.
I happen to agree with that. Quite frankly, since this is the Commissioners' Court, their decision has benefited the county. I can see why they would want the support of the EDC and the city, but I don't think it's necessary. I mean, as you said, they should be speaking with the CBB and working out whatever budgetary concerns they might have.
The bill's already there.
I, I think what, I think it just shows the legislature that, you know, that we're a community that is in support.
Well, I understand.
I think that's what they're trying to show. Continuity between the city and the county.
Any further discussion, counsel?
Can we facilitate a meeting like that? Is there any way to facilitate a meeting between the CBB and those that ultimately hold the purse strings? I mean, because if they wanted to shut everything down as far as the CBB is, they have the ability and right right now, which ultimately, I mean, you've got to look at that and work together on that, because if it didn't come together, it could end up being a lot worse than what they're proposing to us. Think about it.
I don't think that's the city's job, though, to get the commissioners and the city together.
It's not our job. Then I am talking, sorry.
I think they can do that on their own.
Well, this is a discussion between...
You're right, you're right.
Yeah. All right. Any further discussion on the resolution? Glenn?
Yep, this is a tough one, because, like I said, I think the commissioners have the right to do what they're wanting to do, and I understand why they want our support. But I also know the tremendous job that the CBB does. They've done tremendous work over the years, done stuff for me when I was doing projects for different projects. Again, I think this is something that could be resolved between them, or maybe have a better understanding if they would do that, go and sit down with the commissioners and try to get some specifics. To be honest, why, why do you want to do that? I don't think that's their domain.
Well, we've already got a motion and a second. Sure.
I, I'm for the ability for them to have the money to do what they need to do, and I believe that they, everyone wants to promote tourism. I just would think that, and obviously this is past this at this point, but there'd be the system checks and balances that we talked about, where we're not diverting the funds. And Jack says that it is all for promotion tourism, so I don't know if they're gonna have that.
Any further comments? All right. We've got a motion by Lynn, a second by Glenn. All in favor? All in favor and not opposed? We'll get that resolution from our attorneys. We'll review it for us. Adam Steen, review committee organization list for two thousand and nineteen.
It's the same one we had last year. What are the circles?
Those were slots that, obviously, Tony, Jeff is not, is no longer here, so somebody needs to fill those. And then I took slots that nobody wanted, so if anybody wanted those slots, and then, of course, the names are already filled in, do you still want those if you, your name is in the slot? So...
The thing is...
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm willing to remain with the group.
That's a good suggestion, Jen. You're all gonna talk about that.
I don't always want to attend those meetings, but I do try to make it as possible and try to keep everybody informed of that. And I believe I'm also on the museum, and I'll be very glad to remain on that as well.
All right, so do you think you left your, you know, these, these before?
Oh, no, I'll see. I don't have that in front of me, so I apologize.
You didn't get one in your package?
It's on the different foot.
Yeah. You can't have mine, but what here?
So you said the circle ones are based? Vision for Van Derrick?
Vision for Van Derrick. I'm glad you're here, Mr. Hunt. So what is the status of vision for Van Derrick right now?
Well, they've kind of, kind of, truthfully, what's happened is we've had a lot of people that've lost interest, and me and Rochelle were the only ones kind of pushing the boat. And we got tired of it, and we're starting to focus on our business and dealing with our properties and doing the things that we need to do, and we're tired of kind of pushing everybody forward. I think there's still a lot of interest. The Facebook page is there. We can promote it, and if something needs to be pushed through Vision for Van Derrick, we can do it. We just are not pushing it as hard as we want to.
Would you be opposed if at this time we took it off the list and organized city groups? And once you get it in full swing again, we get it, get somebody interested, or would you...
Well, that's up to y'all.
Do you want us to continue to meet?
We are not meeting right now. We set up the Facebook page. Several of the people that are on it have, Larry Dad's on the, on the, the people that were running the thing is Mary Shank. She, I would need to discuss it with her, because she's the one that still really has the most interest. Mary Shank, Larry Dad, Steve Ball has probably lost interest, and then me and Rochelle were the ones pushing the whole thing.
Mayor, well, you think with the push from the city that we might be able to get this thing moving again? Should we get your...
Oh, I think there's plenty of wherewithal to get it going if we get some people that want, if there's a subject that needs to be taken on and people want to work on it, I'm sure there's enough interest there. They want to do the right thing for the city.
Is Mr. Hunt, is Mr. Hunt finished? So, yeah, I'd be glad to stay on that. Now, like Mr. Hunt said, I do, you know, they have to, it has to go through an approval, but I do post on the Vision for Van Derrick Facebook when we have courses and, you know, Pinterest, so...
I, I will say, I put anything on there that is positive and tries to promote Van Derrick. I don't try to let any of the negativity or any...
So it's a good promotion.
Yeah. That's basically what, I don't, if anything's negative or self-promoting, I don't put it on there. If it promotes the community at large, we allow it to go through.
Let me speak to you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else, Chris, that you're interested in? Can we, Shank?
I didn't get a couple of EDCs, Mom. You can have three people.
Well, Jill is on, Councilwoman. As long as you're not discussing city business, for instance, should, um...
Yeah, that would be a tight one.
Yeah. Should trash cans come up? Then as long as three of you aren't sitting there going, "Oh, yeah, we can finance trash cans," that's making a decision, conducting city business. Glenn, you want to stay with Silver Sage and the North County?
The North and the Rose Club.
The North and the Rose Club? You're not a sexist person.
Anybody want the library?
Scott?
We'll let Rebecca fill in whatever blank she's... Tom, what were you interested in?
The library and EDC. Can you be a representative?
Wait, I have to tell the library yet.
If you're Tony, you can...
About number four or five.
In your library, there it is. And what?
EDC.
Questioning my...
That doesn't exist, does it?
I just wanted to, you can be a representative of the city, the EDC, if you're on EDC.
He's the liaison. He'll tell us what's going on. It's not necessarily...
If we have a question, something, then we can see maybe, hopefully, a question.
We'll be on it. The go-to guy, Tom, you're gonna be the go-to guy. Okay, I'll stay with the BBA, although they probably won't show me what I'm doing. And who's up in the middle here? The CBB. Now, I've not been attending your board meetings because I don't see why I should.
You get all the information.
Huh?
You get all my, you get all the information.
I get all the information. I get to see everything.
You can come, so...
And I'm asking you if I have a question, so I am still getting everything, and I'm still reading everything, and I'm still responding to everything.
So you are all in.
Okay.
I mean, you are more than welcome to attend the meeting. You should know what they are.
I get the minutes and everything, so... All righty, I'm on the mailroom. Yeah.
Well, you can act there. Do you want to be a liaison?
No, I have to meet.
You're on.
Yes, we have. Yes, you have at five-thirty after midnight.
Sometimes you'll be on my conference call.
I'll give you ideas if possible. Press this email if you add it to your email list. We also have our city administrator, the head of the CBB meeting. And the attends the EDC. Tom, is there anything else you want to be involved in with this particular tour?
Nothing that I can fit into my schedule.
I'm sorry?
Nothing that I can fit into my schedule.
Was Rebecca on the Van Derrick ISB?
Rebecca's been taking that for whatever reason. I don't think she...
She works for the school.
Mm-hmm. Oh, no, she works for them.
Well, she's up to her own reason.
She said one time she didn't really want to, but...
Well, she's not here. We have a prior department, Jeff is in here, however, we have our administrator who's been checking the facts every once in a while. All right. Glenn, Rebecca? Okay, so Rebecca gets everything else.
Perfect.
Okay, it's done.
Here.
Are we good with that? All righty, move it right along.
I don't agree.
All in favor? Jill, we'll talk that up, of course. Okay, I am, we can, we, discuss procedure for hot tax disbursement. I don't think we're there yet, guys.
I would like to have a full council here.
We also have in your packet this entire very informative, abridged version of what cities need to know to administer hot tax funds. I'd like to look at that before we start into this. I think we need to look at our application process as well as our disbursement process. So if council would make a recommendation to table a postponed particular item?
Can I, can I ask one thing, please? Isn't our deadline for hot tax applications January thirty-first?
So if y'all are just getting this whole information today, you haven't had the application to review, so if we take the next two weeks to look over this, we should be ready for on the fifteenth. Glenn? Glenn makes a motion to table to January fifteenth, Friday, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Please be prepared. Okay. Oh, look, this one. Okay, on the city logo content, we have had absolutely almost no response. Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, so I've gotten four, I've gotten five entries so far, if you notice, in your packet. They're, the first four that you'll see were all submitted by the same person, and they're kind of hand-drawn. The last one was submitted by Bill Stevens, who was the artist who designed the murials on the buildings, and that is all I've gotten so far. I did today, though, get an email that I got after your packets were already put together from a lady who is the president of the Wichita Falls Art Association, and she wanted all the information. She said she was gonna add it to her newsletter of two hundred members which specialize in Western art. So she wanted me to send her all the details on that and what the previous logo looked like and that. So I did that today, so possibly we could get something out of that, because she is gonna add that to her.
And then I posted it on my Facebook page and several of the other social media pages. There was a lot of good, positive feedback on those, so maybe we'll get something.
Right. And I did get two of the emails I got today, I think were, were spawned from the Facebook sharing. So that's the only update I have as of right now. I haven't had any other contact.
Glenn?
My personal thought on this, I think the way this cattle capital came to be was because of rodeo cowboys. I mean, that's how, it's not because of the long-horned drives and stuff. I mean, I know it all ties in, but this idea was spawned by the rodeo, and I would like to see something that reflects that.
I'd agree. Cattle capital world. We had like six or eight, they were all in churches chicken one time, as a matter of fact, pictures and stories of our national, uh, PRCA final, in, in it, or whatever it was, uh, national finals, cowboys that came out of Van Derrick. There were a lot of them. And from my understanding, that's where the term, they come, and I too would like to see the rodeo represented.
Y'all did champion cowboys. They were just ranchers to me when I was a kid, you know? I don't really...
Scooter?
Pretty much, yeah. Scooter and Toots Night's Bill and Ray Morton. I had no idea of all the history of that, when I was a kid.
Well, I think that if we use that as, as a, again, I'd like to see a cattle capital world or something that looks like it represents the rodeo. Patricia? I know you don't like the city logo and city seal, upside-down version. We discussed that. I know we have, so I'm reiterating that. But I can tell you, the oval, as it stands, whether it says Van Derrick, Texas, or whether it says Cowboy Capital World, and it used to say, "Celebrate Van Derrick," or it says, "Van Derrick Pro Rodeo, Van Derrick Rodeo Events," or it's, this one up here is a roper, I think, right above the courthouse. The majority of them are either events or activities that are cowboy-oriented and did, I think, what's Van Derrick Honors Veterans. It's not necessarily. That's recognized, not just in Van, but in Texas, it's recognized internationally. So there's something, I don't know where you want to go with this logo, but rebrand... but rebranding a whole community costs a lot of money.
The logo that she has on her shirt, is that the...
It says Banderah, Texas, Cowboy Capital of the World. Okay? It used, you could have had... Sorry, for one day I don't have a law. Okay, but that would get say Celebrate Banderah. And then, correct. And then after Artie and Bunny made all of the cutouts that you see on our telephone poles, so they are editions of activities in Banderah. They're all people really, really seeing is that oval with howdy y'all and everything. So is the purpose to create a new logo seal, or is it to rebrand Banderah? We have real effective... Mason Schreick nodding his head here, because it's very effective.
Yeah, I totally agree with what Patricia's saying about the rebranding. I don't think you want to get so far away from what's already there that it's totally rebranding it down, because you've got a good branded name right now, and you don't want to change it.
Well, and even the image is branded at this point. People recognize that image. Now, the seal on stationary or something with an upside-down horseshoe ain't in. I agree with that. But I haven't spoken up before, but that's where I'm going with it.
Well, we're looking for something more distinct, something we can actually see, something that is legible. Try to put that on.
Well, so you're talking about a little seal. You know, this...
We're talking about the city logo, not the city seal. City seals are...
I understand this can go down very, very small. Trust me, it can. You know that, because I've got it on lots of little things, then it's recognized.
I think she's brought up a very good point.
I mean, just cautious about that. Jill, do you have something else to say?
No, that's all.
Anyone from counsel? Okay, item S, discussion of potential action on adding additional line holes to the golf, this golf course. You've got the plane, you've got the thugs, you're right here. I feel wonderful in favor of it. Are we going to be doing most of the work ourselves?
We would be doing all of the work, I'd say. What's going on? We're getting more and more people that's interested in this golf, and showing up. As you can see, kind of on the plan here, it's going to change it around a little bit to where it's like a traditional golf course, you start at one, nine ends up close to your clubhouse, I'd say. We will have a clubhouse, but a starting hole. And then go back around 18, kind of ends up the same way. We're going to build a little parking area. That's one of the big problems we're running into now is people having to park up and down the street. And we're trying to get them off. It's not going to be a huge parking lot. You know, we're not going to put Walmart out of business with it. Probably 10, 12 vehicles. And most of the work on the course itself will be trimming some limbs. It's not going to be going in and pushing down trees and building water hampers or anything like that. It's just using the natural terrain that we have and everything there, and then basically trimming down some trees a little bit and adding the other nine baskets and t-markers.
May I, please? After looking at this, my suggestion is that should counsel approve that we make a motion to go ahead and build these second line holes? But if the completion, once we have the total completion number, that we ask EDC to reimburse us for the expense, because as we sit right now, they have, in their line item 49000, Parks and Recreation, City Park Upgrades, and that is part of the City Park, they've got $25,000, so that'd be a good use of it.
They have already been discussions on that a little bit. And if counsel approves it, then we would come back for permission to do that. And basically, we would be out really nothing except just the layer.
Okay, I have family members that are big into this. I supported, I've been talking to John Pegmar, who, you know, originally instigated all this back on initial course. And my main concern is, it was in 2005, and city administrators at that time said, you know, they would use existing rightaways as a very little... Pretty much what they just stated here. But since that time, it's kind of grown. We've started mowing more and more and more. And that's the last bit of wilderness area we have left in our park. I just don't want to see it completely destroyed. If we will stick to that plan, you know, if we've gone in there trimming limbs and stuff, I would like to see them trim all the underbrushes and stuff away from all the big oak trees down there, because I think that helps them for us. But if we have to make a rightaway by trimming and stuff, let's go and start expanding it and going out in the morning. I heard complaints, and John told me all those people walk on, but I do not worry about that anymore. But there's ladies that walk down there and that told me about certain flowers that grow in there or are used to. And now we've expanded our mowing area, and, you know, they're not there. I think we just get a little carried away with it. And I'm not saying this crew that we have now is responsible for that. I don't think that happened before. But keep it to a minimum. And I think the S Golf fanatics that you talk to will tell you, they want the tougher course. They don't want everything there. You have to understand that I have a different view of that area than you, because that's the river that I grew up on. That whole area from Third Street then to the river used to be just a big mesquite. And we sat cats, you know, some dirt roads, mud holes, and a few shafts. So my vision is a little different than everyone else's. Just, like I said, I'm all for it.
Try to keep it as natural as possible.
Very minimal.